Noon 18th, we have two items on the agenda. First up is the police training space.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Council President Prince, council members. My name is Ed Van Bailey. I'm the Deputy Chief of Police and I'll be going over the Renton Police Department training I wanted to start by giving a brief timeline. This is almost four years in the making now. To start with, 2014, we heard about the potential of 200 mil Avenue South going away, which is where we conduct a majority of our training now. At the time, we weren't sure. What we didn't know was when it was actually going to leave, so we just kind of looked around at some private spaces and city-owned property to find if there would be a suitable replacement. We didn't get much progress, again, not knowing when 200 mil would go away. 2015, we started to focus on research. This was at the suggestion of Peter Renner. We talked to him about, you know, what should we do? He suggested maybe looking at some training centers if there's anything nearby. We didn't find any very good data based on training centers in the area because there simply wasn't any. And as we went along, it was still back and forth as far as whether or not 200 mil, how long that was going to be there, whether it was going to be sold. So we did what we could and just continued to train. In 2017, this was a group, the Interact Business Group, we hired for strategic planning. I think the first phase was presented to the council just over a year ago as far as the results. They provided a detailed analysis of each and every type of training conducted. They interviewed and surveyed department trainers, so they probably put out 30 to 40 questionnaires where we all answered what kind of training is conducted, the amount of hours. And we went to some surrounding agencies like Kent-Tuck-Willa to find out what their trainers use as far as training facilities. And then they looked at our existing training space conditions, and I'll have a little display on what those training conditions were. The study results, these were preliminary. They covered our current training requirements, the number of hours trained, long-term training demand that's trends in training, and the assets required for satisfactory training. What they determined was we have over 40,000 total hours of police training that we do in a year. This is a combination of all sorts of different training, both classroom and in the field. But the majority of the classroom was accomplished with a training room capacity of 25 to 35. Simulator usage, if we choose to go that route, they said would be used in excess of 1,000 hours, and I'll go into some reality-based training and simulator training further in the display. Existing training, there are issues and concerns as they identified. The deficiencies were current training, often unsafe environment or unsecure, and this will be kind of a trend in these bullets, which was the space. And I have some pictures that kind of indicate the space that we were training in. Often requires the assignment of armed officers to provide security, introducing live-fire ammo adjacent to simulated weapons training. We lock all of our weapons in training, so the actors would block their handguns, their ammunition, knives, everything into a closet or something over 200 mil, which is actually a utility closet over there. And you'd have to have somebody that was actually armed to stay in case somebody came in. They could come in through a doorway or a back door, so we had to have somebody staying there. The reality-based simulations training, the training space, you'll see the video I provide is just a quick little shoot scenario, but you'll just notice the size of the space is really limited. Mattroom is small, contains obstacles, oddly shaped. We have mats down on the floor there so we can do wrestling, ground fighting, and some of the simulation shooting. No dedicated classroom space. We use the old council chambers for our training, so the chairs that were up for the audience is basically where we sit officers and the instructors stand on the floor and provide They identified these items as our police training. On the left is the classroom training that we currently conduct. On the right is just the full menu of training that we conduct, defensive tactics, firearms, emergency vehicle operators course. Obviously, some of those things are where we still rent out facilities, Renton Fish and Game for our firearms in a place in Boeing. We've used Boeing parking lots for our emergency vehicle training, but most of these things are preceded by some type of classroom training to go over rules, regulations, and safety Quick picture of our current training spaces. The top, not sure if anybody recognizes the back room of the old council chambers there with the blue mats and the wrestling mats down. 200 mil, second floor is where we train. It's approximately 1800 square feet. The bathrooms, the brick walls, the odd shape just makes it for a very confined space. You'll see in the background next to a door that is a hole in the wall where we kind of fell into it, so there's a lot of wrestling and movement going around. We also used any other available space located in the city. The house at the very bottom is the 10130 Southeast Carr Road, which we use, a vacant house, and we do building training, which is another one of those 200 mil Avenue South. Because of the unique features, we practice building clearing. A lot of times, officers respond to unsecured residents or businesses after hours, and this really helps us get the officers on how to clear doorways and hallways and make sure every area is checked. We use fire stations 1416, city facilities, after hours when unoccupied. We do canine searches, building clearing, again, it's really important. And we use the fourth floor. We also use P2, the parking garage for traffic stops for new officers. We train them how to do proper traffic stops. And then for our firearms, we use Renton Fish and Game, and then the West Coast Armory, Bellevue Gun Club. These are all agreements that we have with these private businesses. The quick picture of the defensive tactics, we went through the last ground fighting session and took some pictures. And the bottom right, it shows what a typical scenario is, where we'll only have a couple people on the mats, and you have several instructors and people standing off just watching the training. The center picture is the instructors demonstrating first before we would go hands-on. The walls in the bottom right picture, you'll see big blue mats. We put those up just in case, but we also have Morgan Carney's instructor. She's standing there in case anybody falls backwards, so just a lot of people around so we won't run into those walls. Reality-based training, besides defensive tactics, this is a fairly new concept as far as police departments. We've always done simulations, but reality-based training utilizes tools, techniques, methodologies to approximate in a training setting situations that might occur. So we'll do calls from beginning to end as far as dispatching an officer to a location under a certain set of circumstances where they might encounter a fight, they might encounter a shooting, or it's just simply a de-escalation, talk to somebody down. What we try and create with this is the intense life-threatening situations in a non-lethal environment. It's really hard to guess what your body or your brain's going to do in these high-stress situations, so we try and recreate it as best we can in these kind of scenarios. And that's auditory with loud musics, shouting, yelling. They actually have weapons. The actors will have weapons. They're carefully scripted so that we get the response that we're looking for, so we know if it's going to be a shooting, we'll take it to the point where somebody shoots or just simply hands-on and bring them down to the ground. They've shown that this type of training, as you go through repetitions in these kind of situations, you most likely, and all of it is very topical, whether it happens in Seattle, King County, some of these scenarios that occur, we will recreate those in the training environment to see what our folks do and to make sure they're doing the right thing. Law enforcement isn't necessarily criticized for what they've shot or hit or anything. It's the decision to shoot, or so that's what we're really focused on is the decision-making with reality-based training. And it's not just hands-on. We do a lot of first aid, tourniquets. We've brought in, you know, things such as pig hearts and things like that to stop bleeding, so we try and recreate the best training we can for our folks. The next slide is the video of an example of recent training. It's very short and it's not very dramatic, but it's a knife scenario where we want to make sure that the officers respond. We've been training about how to get out of the way of weapons. So the actor is, you'll notice three safeties. They're wearing the orange vest, orange traffic vest. You have two officers going through the training, and then you have one actor, and they're all Renton police, but you'll see how much room they take in the room that has the mats.
I'm all bloody. I'm full of blood.
Hey Bud, how's it going?
I'm full of blood. I hear voices.
You hear voices?
There are voices.
Can you sit down?
Sit down for me.
What's going on?
I hear voices.
Sixteen.
I'm all bloody. Help me.
You're all bloody?
Yes.
Do you need some help?
Yes, help me.
What's going on today?
I'm all bloody.
You're all bloody?
Yes.
What's your first name?
Louis.
Louis?
Yes.
Sorry, you're all bloody. Where are you all bloody from?
I don't know what happened. The voices are taking over.
Okay.
Help me.
I got fire coming.
Okay.
Why don't you sit down for me?
We'll take you some care. Okay. Okay.
Hey, sit down, dude.
Sixteen, cop fire.
So, not very dramatic, but it shows a very small scenario that we conduct, and that's just, you'll see them, they kind of look behind themselves because they don't know if they're going to throw somebody, shoot somebody, and they want to make sure that, you know, they're not hitting a wall or anything like that. Those scenarios are carried out from beginning to end. They do radio calls. They'll apply first aid. That's a really big deal right now in law enforcement, is applying first aid after you use a lethal encounter. So moving to the fourth floor, after working with facilities from the very beginning back in 2016, we've been going over different areas, locations, on what we might be able to do, and the fourth floor came up a short time ago, so working with Kelly and her group as far as what that would provide. As compared to 200 mil, we have a secured, controlled access to the training. It's almost twice as large, at 3,400 square feet. It has a dedicated classroom, and I'll show you a map just after the next slide. Dedicated classroom for 30 or more students for multi-department use. It would be on the fourth floor of City Hall, so other departments can use that as well. They'll have the computers and the TV monitor for training. Safety area for downloading and securing police officer weapons. That's built into it, so it's a separate, secured location where we can store weapons and not have somebody armed waiting outside.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. President.
You have in your slides something that say if you can put future space for a force response in this decision-making, and you also say that the most important training is the decision to shoot or not. How do you train for that? What kind of, what is the best that you have to be able to train the officers on that area?
Well, we'll take current trends or current events that might have happened, shootings that might have taken place. But first and foremost, we stay with the rules of law that allow us to use deadly force. So they're specific to imminent threat of death or serious bodily injury, and that can be subjective, so what we do through the training is present scenarios that are clear and imminent that somebody will die or possibly suffer serious bodily injury, which is the right to use force, or we stop short of that, and you basically educate the officers, you build the scenario for the results that you want, whether they shoot or don't shoot, but it's based on how they perceive the threat and what they see as taking place. So it's what they know of the law and what the law says they can do, and then their perceived threat. So in the street, a knife is a deadly weapon, but a knife being held by an individual that's 30 feet away is, you could use other means. We have tasers, we have beanbag shotguns, which is typically what we'll do. So that would be a separate incident where, you know, different agencies train different ways, but we train that the threat is imminent, that a life is going to be taken or is being taken in front of us, whether it's our own or it's a citizen. So the officers have to make that decision based on the law and what's presented before them. So to answer the question more directly, we provide different scenarios that are obvious that they have to use force or just short, and we have methods of pausing the scenario to ask them, what do you see? What is the threat? And have them explain that way, so if there's any correction that needs to be made, we can make it in training. But it's hard to define exactly what that trigger is that makes an officer decide to use force besides their knowledge of the law and the threat that is presented to them. I hope that answers.
May I come?
Yes, go ahead.
Do you use, do you have the capacity to use any three-dimensional technology for this kind of trainings?
Well, just the simulations that we do now, the reality-based training, which is, you know, having an actor act it out in pre-choreographed scenarios that we script.
But not in digital?
We don't have anything digital, no, ma'am. Part of the plan we have is for future simulation. I put a slide in there that talks about simulator technology, so that's in there. That's a really big trend that's going through and helps with the decision-making process using real-life scenarios.
Thank you.
Going back to the fourth floor, the future space for a force-response decision-making simulator, open multi-source space for defensive tactics, overflow classroom, reality-based training, which is a really big cell for us on the fourth floor, which I'll show in the map. And then two rooms to simulate location officers responding to during calls. We call them RBT rooms. They simulate an apartment bedroom, an office space. We just kind of mock them up to mock scenes to replicate some kind of encounter they might have. We use, you know, Starbucks coffee. We'll set up tables just to try and recreate a scenario that might have happened recently. This is the fourth floor. What you're looking at is the southwest corner, which would be right above the gym, the workout room. If I can orient you to the map, here's the south stairwell, and this is the current elevators across is the emergency management team. So coming through here, this would be the secure door that goes back and then a weapon-download area within the secure door, a door that locks. The defensive tactics space, which would be rubber mats and different walls than your RBT rooms, one and two, where we can set up an office or a bedroom or something similar. And then you have the classroom and a simulation room. I've got an ad coming up about a simulation room, about the size of space that it takes, and it's a three-screen. You can get more screens, but it's a three-screen projector run by a computer that provides different scenarios and has a shoot, don't shoot capability, which means we actually use weapons that are mocked to the simulator that respond. And then the classroom, which is a 35-person classroom. What we found the space will provide is large enough to reduce the secondary hazards. It's a big enough space that we could throw each other around or do whatever and not run into a wall. The reality-based training and lecture training conducted simultaneously. We do like to precede scenarios with proper training, you know, we'll go through the, this is how you do it, then we show you how to do it, and then you do it. So the reality-based training and lecture training can be conducted concurrently, so there's classroom going on while we're actually doing simulations. Reduce travel time. This is in City Hall. It allows, you know, 60% of all of our training is done in a classroom, and all of our officers are here. They can go in between shifts, before shifts, after shifts for any type of remedial training. Provide access to safe, unsecured training space outside of traditional work hours, which is oftentimes when you have remedial training, that's when it is done, or people that want to work on it. Instructors can get together, use the classroom, and come up with different scenarios. Sponsor host training. We have a lot of instructors that do statewide training as it is now, whether it's FTO, the Field Training Officer School, or motor schools. So Renton is really lucky in the talent that we have as far as cadre. We can certainly put on and host training for other agencies that can come here and receive training in that classroom. Community engagement opportunities to demonstrate police training. This is your community policing academies. These are any type of efforts outside of, from our community programs, folks, to re-engage the community through police, through training, through education. We can host these things here, and the demonstrating of police training with a simulator, with that three-dimensional or the, yeah, the simulator training with the screens, that's a really big thing as far as putting, whether it's elected officials or community members through the training to see what their officers are receiving. There's the simulator example. It's quite large. Michael Nolan had put the dimensions from the fourth-floor map, put that on here to make sure that that would fit. It's a 180-degree environment, real-life scenarios, marksmanship training. You can actually train officers on how to shoot and record, just like a regular pistol range. The military uses this quite often. It saves a lot in ammunition, which has turned out to be really expensive. Their actions are recorded, and you can go back and replay that. They can learn from what they've done, mistakes, what they could do better, but everything is recorded. And multidirectional sound that just recreates the environment that we're looking for is to try and simulate stress, distractions, noise, things like that. The cost estimate, I know it's pretty small. This was based on our permitting center, since we didn't have a good example of what we had as far as the fourth floor, so we used the most recent, which would be the permit center, with an estimated cost per square foot of $113, with a total cost of $391,000. And going through the conversations with finance and with facilities, we know that we have the money through REIT money, excess REIT money. The reason for the prices is you have to change the walls to do some type of noise, to change the noise that's some of the fighting and ground rolling can create. The fire suppression systems would have to be moved. They're currently, you know, if you look at any fire suppression system, it sticks out of the ceiling a little bit. We just can't afford to hit one of those or knock it off, or else the whole floor would flood, so those would have to be moved, as well as HVAC vents and things like that, so... Next slide. Are there any questions?
Any questions, council?
Oh, I do have one quick question.
Go ahead, Ellen.
So on the simulator, that's like a stand-up simulator. Are you guys looking at any of the virtual reality programs? Do you think any of that?
Which would be the, we have looked at some of those. The price and updates were staggering. When we go to our conventions, we get to see some of those trainings, so we have looked at those.
Is that where the technology's going now?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Anything to, you know, the cost upfront, a simulator like this could be anywhere from $150,000 to $200,000, because they update and the scenarios change. They give you a bulk of it, but with the technology that changes, there are always, there's always some kind of additional fee that carries on with it, but the upfront costs are usually the largest, and then to maintain, it's not too bad. But with the virtual reality, you have to buy specialized weapons that come with it, and that's where the expenses can really run into, into the high amount. If we train with, let's say, the rifles, shotguns, handguns, tasers, things like that, the price just continues to go up, but that is something that we're looking at. Yes, sir.
Is the technology better, though? I mean, is it more realistic and a lot more?
It is, sir. It's completely submersive. You know, with it, it's like you're there inside where this is an 180-degree. It's clearly a screen, so...
It could be a good investment.
Yes, sir.
Can we start looking at the cost involved?
We're just now starting to look. As the fourth floor began to grow legs, we thought, this has always been something that our training folks have wanted, but we're just now recently taking a look at it to see the feasibility. Kent has something similar to this, so, yeah, we're definitely looking at...
Similar to the one we're looking at?
This one that's on the screen, yes, sir. So, but, yeah, we're looking at the virtual reality, all of those.
Ms. McGurk.
Yes. How would these improvements compare to other neighboring, like pure jurisdictions, other departments? Would we be better, same, worse in comparison to other departments?
With the cadre, no doubt, better. With this space, we'd be better. You know, your bigger agencies like Seattle have quite an extensive training facility, but most of the classrooms, or, excuse me, most of the training spaces that you'll see within Tuck-Willa-Fed away, they are classroom, and then they just kind of adopt. So this dedicated space would provide us a better opportunity for reality-based training and virtual room and classroom altogether. It would definitely put us better.
Ms. President?
Yeah, following the questions, thank you very much for your presentation, first of all. It was really, for me, was a kind of eye-opening when I saw the video where you shows how the way you're trained today. As a council member, for me, it's really important to make sure that the public safety has all the resources necessary to be able to provide the quality of services that we need in the community that is so important for us. So training, your training facilities had to be, from my point of view, had to be a state-of-the-art facility with the latest that we can acquire to make sure that you guys are trained to the level that we need. So I happen to agree that this is, if this is a good investment to have the latest, we should start seeing on the prices and how we can acquire what is needed, just based on the fact that even if the cost is really, really high, is the benefit of that, it's going to be substantial. It is not expensive that we should not think to consider. Just not, not just because we think, oh, my God, it's so, so high, that, no. If it's going to be something that is going to, you guys will benefit and the community is going to benefit directly for that, I think it's an investment that we can consider and look for it, from my point of view, you know? Because, and saying that, when Councilman McGurk was saying how we compare with other departments, how we compare with other cities around us, and who, if you have a shop around, who is the city that has the best training facilities around? Do you know?
Seattle, being the closest and the largest, most extensive. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Have you considered the savings you're going to make from not having to rent other spaces? So right now, you're using other locations. Is there a cost associated with those, and are you going to save money by having this onsite that you can deduct from the overall cost?
No, ma'am. 200 mil, the ranges will still require a fee. So the training we do that's classroom and reality-based training is at 200 mil, which we already currently own, so we don't pay a fee besides maybe facilities has a fee or a cost to clean up, but there's no, I don't see any direct savings.
Thanks. That was it.
Go ahead, Don.
You guys have really been patient.
I've been waiting on you.
Well, first of all, I personally would rather have a bigger facility, to be honest with you. I don't know how realistic that is. It looks to me like the layout is better than what I would have anticipated. My concern with this is, first of all, let me ask you a couple of questions so that I know that I'm on the right page. But one of the reasons that we're using the shift system that we're using for patrol is that there's times when there are people, extra people on duty that they, so they can train while they're still working. Is that still...
Yes, sir. We had formulated a plan for that, your special operations folks that are downtown, to backfill for folks when they do training on duty.
Okay, so there's a cost savings to have the facility close here?
Yes, sir.
And I, some of the things that I want to be sure that should be in there, obviously, after taking a look at the 200 mil Avenue site, which I most likely should have done many years ago, I'm ashamed that I didn't because it's the pits, to be honest with you, but you guys have done a good job of making do, so I wanted to say thank you for I think this should be the best facility that we can put together in that space. My understanding is that we should look at some kind of a movable wall partitions so that you can change the structure, so the person isn't always going into just the same square box, you know, and look more, some more at props. And then, again, the safety of the mats and all that with the windows.
Yes, sir.
I'm concerned about the officer's safety. And I think that we should go for the virtual reality, the best possible virtual retraining that we can. I know it's expensive. It's most likely more expensive than we would like to do, but to me, it's paramount that we find the money to do this. This is, you know, this is going to save us so much money in the long run. One bad decision and us not being able to show that we have provided the best training possible, it'll cost us more than any virtual machine. So I guess I'm looking for next steps. I mean, I'd like to see this go to contract tomorrow, find the money, and, I mean, I guess that's what I'm looking at, is, okay, we've talked about it, like you say, for how many years? And now I don't want to talk about it for another year or six months. So I think that I would like to see some kind of a plan, come back to the council, or what the cost, realistic cost this is going to be, and to, excuse me, get started on it as soon as possible.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I'd just like to express my thoughts too. And I, I want to thank Mr. Person for, for advocating continuously for this training center and then for the police department for doing such great research. And I just want to express agreement for what's been said by, by other council members, especially what Don just said and what Ms. Perez and Ryan were getting at, which is that I'd like to see us go with the most modern system we can have. I, I think the virtual reality would be great, so, it sounds like the mayor might have some ideas for us.
I just, I couldn't resist. Thank you, and Mr. President, thanks for the opportunity. To, to Don's point, Don's been saying this for some time now, that Renton has, has one of the best-trained departments around. He comes from this department, I mean, many years serving with Renton Police, so he's got a, a good sense of all the other agencies, excuse me, and we have been really fortunate to have a very well-trained department. The other thing is this council, and I, and I'd say previous councils, have always been very generous to make sure that any of the needs of the police department is taken care of. So, there's never been any hesitation whatsoever to come forward with any kind of initiative, regardless of the cost, when it comes to officer's safety and the public's safety, and to make sure that we have the best-trained department possible. One of the things I want to make sure that there's no misunderstanding, particularly amongst the public, is you're dealing with highly volatile situations almost on a daily basis, and things can go south in a second. And we don't want to suggest for a minute by having a new training facility that Renton will never be faced like all the other cities around us have been facing every year with tragic incidents. We've been very fortunate, fortunate and also well-trained, but still, we, you know, we just don't know. We want to strive for the best-trained officers that, that protect themselves and protect the public, and that's what they do every day, that's what they'll continue to do. And I agree with Councilmember Person that, you know, we're prepared to move forward as quickly as we can on this facility and with your blessing, once we get there. And, and also looking at the best possible equipment and the different types of simulators and things of that nature, anything that makes it better for the organization, we won't hesitate to bring that forward to you. Also want to mention, Bob Harrison made a suggestion today. These expensive simulators are not everywhere around, and it's conceivable that we could work out some sort of inter-local agreement with a couple of the departments.
Absolutely.
To use simulators to help with the cost of that, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
I'm in charge of a fee.
Ms. Perez and then Mr. Povoni.
I have a question about the facility, the facilities, the, the space that you're going to use right now on the fourth floor. Do you accommodate to that space because that was what I've heard to you is enough? Do you think that you need a bigger space? Now, the council member Person mentioned it. Do you make the best out of the situation, or is the ideal?
I'm sorry, what was the last part?
Or is the ideal? Or you say, oh, this is what we need? Or you just make the best out of the situation because this was offered to you?
Well, this satisfied, as we went through everything from the, when they gave us the, the results from the survey and the study, we needed the classroom and the reality-based training space, which is what this space provides us. So, there was not, there was no, it wasn't, it wasn't just given. You know, we, we spent several trips with Kelly and her group going through the different locations and coming up with, maybe this is the fourth, maybe the fourth different time that we came up with the reality-based training room, secure facility, and the large space. So, this was something that we worked on for quite a while to satisfy all those things that we were missing.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Povoni.
Yeah, a quick question. Is this a scenario where we could actually use some of the narcotics seizure funds for the training in the, the virtual reality? Would that fit into...
I don't believe so. I'd have to check, sir. You know, it's got to have a nexus to narcotics, so if it was narcotics training, I know we could be, we'd be able to use that, but if it's just straight training, I'd have to check with finance and the rule.
Any other questions from council? All right, we are going to move on. Next up, we have regional issues. Does anyone have any regional issues?
I don't.
All right, so I, I have one. Last week at our Sound Cities Public Issues Committee meeting, we got a briefing on the 2018 one-night count, Countess Inn, and what we found was that, 2018 count found that 12,112 people are experiencing homelessness county-wide. Total number of people identified as experienced homelessness has increased by 4%, 469 people from 2017, and the unsheltered population increased by 15%, 835 people. 52% 6,320 people were unsheltered on the streets, sleeping in vehicles, encampments, unsanctioned or sanctioned, or other places not meant for human habitation. And 48% 5,792 were sheltered in transitional housing, safe havens or, havens or emergency shelters. The number of people sleeping in their cars, and this is in the Seattle Times, increased from last year to this year. So, although we all know this issue is not going away, it looks like it's continuing to increase. And if there is nothing else, we are going to adjourn this section of committee a whole and reconvene at 6:30 for our reception for Representative Judy Cleburne.